Where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, 50 miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community, and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home. The best part of Portage is what's next. The best part of Portage is you. There's more for you in Indiana. There's a place in the Midwest, 50 miles southeast of Chicago nestled near the coast of Lake Michigan. It's a place driven by what's coming next, a place where industry is the lifeblood of its community, and its pulse is gridded with sand and steel, fire and smoke. It's a city building its future together, one business, one family, and one home at a time. This is a place for makers, doers, and dreamers. It's where the global marketplace meets hometown values, where Americana isn't just a tradition, it's a way of life. Here, your experience makes the difference. With access to railroads, major waterways, and eight different highways, this is a place in motion, sending goods, services, and ideas not just across the state, but across the world. And when the work ends, the day's just beginning. With beaches like West Beach in the Indiana Dunes National Park, exciting hiking and biking trails like the Diana of the Dunes Dare or the BMX Track, and local treasures and exciting festivals, you'll know you're in more than just a bedroom community. From veterans of foreign wars to hometown heroes, our diversity is our strength, and we forge our future with the same flame as our steel. Oh, there's a place in the Midwest that's calling you home.
Welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Portage. Will you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Hi. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Parnell, would you mind leading us in the prayer?
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be here this evening to take care of the city's business. We pray, Father, that your Spirit will guide us, give us wisdom and guidance. We ask for your continued blessing upon our city, its citizens, and the administration. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Liz, can we do the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Weidenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Geishurst.
Here.
Councilmember Parnell.
Here.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Here.
Councilmember Ambler. Councilmember Zilly.
Here.
Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes from October 8th? And if there were not any corrections, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Communications, correspondence, announcements from the mayor, nothing at this time. We get to the adoption of the 2025 budget.
Yes, so the budget committee, we met, there were some, there was some discussion, there were some areas that were questioned. If I can have the floor, I'll go through them, and then if there's any discussion or questions, I can try to answer that after.
Sure. I guess to clarify, was there an actual vote on either an endorsement, recommended changes from the committee, or is this just a follow-up of notes from the meeting?
This is a follow-up from the discussion that occurred at the meeting.
Okay, so the budget committee, these aren't official, like, recommendations directly, but these are things talked about at the budget committee?
Well, there would probably be recommendations that I would be bringing to the council, yes.
Sure, but it's not that the budget committee voted on official recommendations? I just want to make sure we have that further, or did you guys? That's what I couldn't recall, because I was on the phone, pretty sick at the time.
Right, right. So we moved to have the budget presented to the council.
Got it. So these are just notes coming from here? And it's, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll just say, because there is a difference for the record of, if you have, like, the committee votes for recommendations, those are official recommendations from the committee. If you're reading, like, your notes, I mean, that's also very valuable, but just making sure that we're clear that it's not the budget committee recommendation.
These will be my opinions, based on what the budget committee discussed, so I can present them to the council, and if the council would like to add more value to what we have to offer, we can do so here.
Absolutely. And of course, the other budget committee members could do that, too. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. So, the first one was the longevity pay in the mayor's budget for one of the employees. There was a question about whether or not bridging her time end to where it was increased to the $1,925, as it's been proposed. However, the employee herself only identified her full-time service here being 10 years, which would bring that amount down to the salary ordinance of where her 10 years of service would only then justify having, I believe, about two, let's see, it says 2.25% in her base wage. So that there was a concern to bring that amount down to match what the salary ordinance says for an employee who has longevity of 10 years. We did recognize that there is an increase that the HR budget, $15,000, was omitted originally, but that has been put in, which then increased the budget amount of what we had looked at on the proposed budget. And we also now have voted in to have the IT system administrator added to the budget, even though it is being offset from the service provider. I still believe that there's anywhere between, I'll say roughly $6,000 to $10,000, that still has to compensate to make up that difference for his salary. Also, we're looking at the wage increases for the clerk's office for the deputy. Originally, I was told there was 2% raises. I understood it and believed it was to be across the board until it was disclosed that those raises were anywhere between 2%, 4%, and even as high as 6%. But yet, we're also still retaining an independent consultant on the budget for $20,000 as well. And from what I understand, it's to keep her on while there's cross-training going on this year, but if we're cross-training our deputies who are not yet trained, I would think that the independent consultant's amount that's been appropriated would be less. And if we're looking at raises, I would venture to say 2% instead of a staggered tiered amount until all the clerks are trained and brought up to speed. Now, I do understand that it's because that the clerk's office deputies are still paid less than what the normal deputies of their same position within the area are, but yet they're not yet doing those functions or responsibilities yet for those higher wage increases that is being offered. And we're still, we're still holding on to the independent consultant as well. So, in light that the deputies are a bit underpaid from the region, I would venture to say then, yes, I can see 2% across the board would be justifiable, but still, I have concern that if we're retaining an independent consultant, that as these deputies are being trained, that that consultant's fees would be less by the time midpoint of the year. The other concern as well was for the $25,000 with the YMCA. There has been a lot of discussion, a lot of emails back and forward to find out just who is taking advantage of the $25,000 membership being paid to be a member of the YMCA. It ends up being roughly a third of our employees are using that as their membership. It's not just for working out and wellness and fitness. I understand there's other programs going involved. I also understand that even the list that I received that showed roughly about 138 employees using it, that was reduced by about a dozen or so who came off that list for, I was told, various reasons. So the, the amount of people who are using it is, is less, while 2/3 of our workforce are paying 100% out of their pocket for memberships elsewhere, whether it's for wellness activity, fitness, or daycare, or anything else. I just can't see why we're excluding them from these perks because we're keeping ourselves restrictive to only paying for the YMCA. I would be more prone to say, use that $25,000 that's more diversified and inclusive, where we can use St. Franciscan, or Porter, or even our own Porter Health Department of the county to come in and do screenings and things that are being offered by the YMCA as, as a perk for our employees being members. Now, I know there was some thought, until it was clarified, that we thought that our fire department and our police department were free members, but what we do find is that if they were not on the current city program, their fees would be at 50%. So instead of $40 for a membership, it would be $20. Right now, we're paying $10 per person. There was even some suggestion that maybe just doing a flat $5 stipend to all employees so that they can have their choice of where to go for fitness, or a lifestyle, recreational opportunity for better wellness or better health. There was also discussion that our health insurance, you know, for certain types of individuals who meet the criteria and eligibility, some health insurance policies also pay for physical fitness, such as silver sneakers and such. So those are, those were brought to the table. They were several different ideas that were explored, potentially that, you know, if we're going to go into the business of wellness prevention on top of regular healthcare maintenance with our health insurance plan, that it, look at something that's more of a program for all our employees to benefit from, not just some, and have 2/3 of our workforce paying 100% out of their pocket to seek those services because they're not members of the Y. So those were the areas that we talked about extensively, and so I'm, hopes that we can work something out to where we can amend the, amend the budget to reflect some of these changes.
Thank you. Other comments from council members?
The YMCA, did it not cover also for daycare for employees?
From what I understand, there's members who use daycare, but of the family membership.
Leanne, could you clarify that? I apologize, I know you're kind of telling me in a whisper, but would you mind just clarifying for that?
I believe it does cover, it gives them a discount on it. She didn't give us the exact dollar amount, the percentage it gives, but she mentioned that there are other programs that are definitely covered, and, and our employees do utilize that.
My understanding for my entire time on the council is, all full-time city employees would get a YMCA membership, and that's what this $25,000 covers.
That is correct.
That's correct.
But that's, so, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just confused. Victoria, you were saying that it's not covering everybody. Can you clarify what you mean by that?
So I asked for a list of members who were actually utilizing it, who were employees, and out of our 300-plus workforce, there's only about 130 that are actually members. And even of that 130, there was a dozen or so that came off those roles. So not everybody's using it.
Right, but, I understand that, but what I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we were making people pay out of their pocket, they're just not utilizing the benefit that we are providing. So isn't it our job to make sure everyone knows that benefit exists, as opposed to just axing the benefit?
So not everybody who wants to use the YMCA is using the YMCA, otherwise, they would be a member. So if they're going to Anytime Fitness or Classics, then they're choosing by will to go there, but they're not getting $10 that we're covering for an employee to go to the YMCA.
If I could say-
I would also argue, the YMCA is one of the very few nonprofit organizations providing this, the others are businesses.
So, and on that, I would state a couple of things, just for some clarification. So, where do we begin? It doesn't cost $25,000 for every member of the city who's a full-time employee to be in the YMCA. Based on the deal currently arranged, it would cost $33,000. And that was the original draft of the budget as prepared by my office. So during this year, I began speaking with the YMCA about amending the agreement we have with the YMCA so that we would be paying for the number of city employees who are utilizing it. Now, to be fair, you could also state, how do you know it's going to cost, you know, more or less, how people are going to use it? So in our discussions, we've reached the point that, given that there are some employees who probably just are not going to use this benefit, they just choose not to, we don't anticipate it ever maxing out to the 33. So the estimate that I went by was the $25,000 number that Victoria's talking about. I, myself, having, you know, prepared and proposed this budget to you guys, I'm very pro us continuing this relationship with the YMCA. And as we continue to talk, I mean, if it ends up being less than $25,000 in expense, I would be at least fiscally okay with that. I mean, I would be encouraging people to make use of that benefit. But to state, my goal is ideally for that to be $25,000 or lower. If you guys, as a council, want to explore, I don't recommend taking that benefit away. I will just state that we're already trying to shift to a system of paying for employees as they use it, even if it's as simple as each month that comes in. I think what I would also add, and Colin, I don't know exactly if you already said this, so I don't want to use up too much time, because I think you made a very good point, but a YMCA membership is $50 at least. This arrangement we have with the city, because we're doing it in bulk, is $10 per employee. I don't think that we could guarantee pricing at that if we were allowing employees to go anywhere. Now, if we were just giving everybody a straight $10, and you could put it towards Anytime Fitness, or put it towards Planet Fitness, I'm not trying to advertise or poke fun at any of these companies. All I'm trying to say is that, to me, that's like giving me, like, a Nordstrom $10 gift card. I'll be like, thanks, but my decision to go to Nordstrom is not going to be based on this gift card. Whereas, you get the full Y membership under the deal the city currently has arranged.
Right, and if we provide it to employees as a stipend, it will be taxable. It's a taxable income, under the IRS guideline.
Whereas, this is automatic, and as noted, to a nonprofit that partners with the city in other ways, too. This is not a reward for that partnership. I think it's a very worthwhile way to encourage health for our employees, give them access to it. I just can't stress that this could end up being less than $25,000 in cost, but I felt that it wasn't fully necessary to budget $33,000, but I felt $25,000 would have us covered no matter what the final deal turns out to be. Leanne, was there something I'm forgetting?
So I did want to say, I believe since we have an HR director now, when Lynn, you know, hires anybody new, and she is promoting the Y, so everybody, you know, has the opportunity and knowledge, I mean, she's done a wonderful job about that.
And that's good, because I agree with Colin, how many employees actually know? And now, and just, you second that as far as, you know, we can make them aware, and that count would definitely be up.
Right, well, I understand that. The only thing is, where my position is, and it's not to say I'm not in favor of people utilizing the Y, but I'm looking at those other 2/3 of the workforce who don't want to utilize the Y, that they're not receiving any type of reward or benefit elsewhere. So they're not receiving something that they can do.
I think the thing to keep in mind there, though, is that not everybody necessarily, how to put this? If I decide to make you guys all a cake, you know, before the council meeting, maybe not everybody wants a piece of cake. I'm not obligated to get a different treat that somebody else wants, you know?
Well, and do we even have, do we even have a way that we're budgeting, or not budgeting, do we have a way that we're monitoring the usage? Because if we're spending $10 for somebody to use the Y, and then they're not using it at all.
And as noted, we're already setting up an agreement with the Y that we wouldn't be doing that, because the Y would be keeping track of who's utilizing the membership by actually coming and claiming it. So you would come to the YMCA, you would say, I'm a city employee, I'm using my membership. The employees that choose not to, they'd let us know, and then it would reflect the bill. That's being worked out, and that's why, again, that's why what's budgeted is-
Well, no, I understand that, and, and I can say I'm using the Y, and I'm going to go in and become a member, but me physically then being proactive and participating in the memberships, or going there, like, I can be a member in January after New Year's, and then not go there at all until June. Now, we've just spent-
Well, yeah, but how's that any different than us giving it to them on their paycheck? If you go and use it, and then you don't use it, we're giving you money to-
Well, and that's why I said, explore something that is more diversified, where it is more inclusive for everybody to have access to other programs other than what's being offered at the Y.
I think the challenge there is, if you wanted to do that, as noted, because the other options you might explore, assuming that the only thing you're looking at for is like a place to work out, which, maybe this is a good time to pitch, that we now have an outdoor exercise facility in our city, go and check it out, but all I'm trying to get, but all I'm trying to get at is, assuming that we're just talking about working out, but the Y offers so many other benefits besides working out, whether that's a place to hold an event, whether that, there's a whole song about what the YMCA could do, but what I mean by that is just, but, but, but to state, I'm sorry. And I guess to be fair, no, but you're absolutely right. It's hard to, like, police, but I guess the note is, but, but the bigger picture for me is that even if it was just all about working out, you know, so if we're talking about comparing the Y to like a different gym, or like a Planet Fitness, or something, the challenge there is, we're not going to be able to contact all of those companies and work out a deal where it's $10 per employee, you know, in every case.
Well, the only way to do that would be by giving a stipend on your paycheck, which is then going to be a taxable benefit, which is more of a burden to the clerk treasurer's office, to add to everybody's checks. I mean, in this scenario, we are simply saying, we are, we are helping the Y subsidize a membership. They offer free memberships to a lot of people based on income, I mean, they provide a service to the community. It's a $25,000 program that we are giving the Y $25,000 in exchange. Every city employee is eligible, every full-time city employee is eligible for a membership.
But then also-
We're not necessarily saying it's a gym membership, or a health and fitness benefit. You just become a member of the YMCA by virtue of being a city employee.
And I think on that note, if there was, and I'm not trying to encourage it, I'm just trying to say, if there was a competing organization, maybe not competing, if there was another organization, or two more organizations that does what the Y does in our area, both nonprofits, both offering roughly the same range of things, it might be very worthwhile to explore, just financially, you know, what one gets the most bang for the buck. But the Y being, not a monopoly, but kind of the main thing that does that in our community, and it's accessible to all the employees, that's where I think this is a worthwhile program to continue with. But as noted, it would cost more to pay for everybody. If, if the Y was resistant, if they were hesitant about renegotiating to such an extent that we couldn't get a reduced price, $25,000 is what we expect it to at least be, though, at the very least, because no matter how much we promote this benefit, not every employee is going to use it. And my goal is to not be billed when an employee chooses not to use it.
Well, even in some of those discussions, I believe the Y was saying that they would even explore having more employee participation in the contribution of their membership, so that $10 may change even in the future. But again, I'm just looking that if we're doing anything for our employees, that it's not just so pigeonholed, and a point, in fact, of Gina saying, make the employees aware, now that we do have an HR director, that we are exploring all of our options out there with other facilities, so that we can bring that into a whole holistic type of universal wellness program if we're going to go into that area.
And again, that is being promoted by HR. I mean, I can't, I'm so sorry, I, I mean, I don't, I don't ask all the employees, like, tap them on the shoulder how they're utilizing it, but as they do, I think that's great. I just want to note that the budget amount is reflective of the anticipation we're going to be paying less, because the arrangement of how the Y bills, for lack of a better word, is going to be changing in the new year. It could be, end up that we spend less than $25,000, in which case, I might come to you guys, and maybe we transfer it somewhere else. I feel $25,000 is the safe mark where we can negotiate from without the employees losing an existing benefit, for those who want to use it.
Is that what?
Yes.
And for the record, like, when money was looking tight, I totally looked at knocking this benefit off, but we were able to make other things work, and that's where we talked to the Y about the potential change. Ferdinand, you're no longer on the board of the Y, so you can say whatever you want, right?
Right. And so I could say, I appreciate the $8,000 reduction in the initial budgeted amount, and thank you for making that attempt to kind of meet in the middle.
I want to address a couple other spots that were brought up. One has to do with the employee with longevity. That was a calculation thing. I am decent with numbers, but I did not go in through, do all the payroll, like, what this would cost. I know that Carrie couldn't be here tonight, but Liz, are you able to clarify if we got that figured out on the longevity side post that committee meeting?
We found out that she was, her time was bridged, so she is getting the longevity for the amount of time she has, and that was done by the previous mayor. So yes, that has been corrected.
Gotcha. So that is reflective of the bridge.
Are we going to have a policy about bridging money? Because as I understand, we don't have a policy right now, and we don't have an ordinance about bridging time.
Yeah, so to be as gentle as I can, there's no other employee currently who's in such a situation, and so going forward with the transition to things like the new employee handbook, and with HR, and then with the guidance of Ed, we're going to be able to have a set policy. I think what you're referring to is that record-keeping and how these things were communicated were not done, maybe in the best way, over the course of not just the last four years, just the last 20-some years. There's a lot that's changing now that we've got HR and things like that. So yes, there won't be an issue like this again, as far as why it became a discussion point, but there's no other concern about that happening with somebody. I can't just bring somebody back who used to work for the city and bridge them all of a sudden, you know? Sorry, Ed, I didn't mean to get a smile out of you.
Well, I believe we did have that for a lot of things in the personnel code prior to it being repealed. I know vacation was included in there, longevity was included in there, there was a provision to bridge employees.
What Victoria's referring to is that there were some instances in the past 20 years where an employee would get bridged, and it was just communicated via email.
Right.
And even something like, we've straightened a lot of that out. It's kind of an example of sometimes it's good to go forward with a new policy or a defined policy. So whether or not that was in there or not, it doesn't change the fact that it wasn't necessarily done in, like, the most recordable, you know, way. So that part has been addressed going forward, and I believe that budget-wise, the amount that's budgeted is the correct amount for that employee. There was another employee who would have been in this situation, it's just we had a, department had changed in some cases, so that was no longer an issue. Regarding the HR and Trevor, for my own comfort, what I would say is that when I initially proposed the budget, you might have noticed the adjustment, we had budgeted for a 6% increase in health insurance, which, again, it could have been possible that health insurance might have gone higher than 6%, but we had to start somewhere with the budget to get through. What's been communicated to us now is that what's being anticipated is a 2.6% increase in health insurance. Liz and I discussed how to adjust. So right now, what you have in this proposed budget in front of you is a, budgeted for a 4% increase, just because it's not quite set in stone yet, so we just thought it was safer to pad a little, but not as extreme as the 6%. And so when it comes to certain small amounts, there's enough covered there. In regards to the clerk treasurer questions, I don't want to jump ahead, but Liz, I want to make sure you have the floor for those questions.
Thank you. Okay, the, the questions were the wages, the increase to, from 2% to 6%. I went through my department, and I went, I gave raises compared to what the, their job responsibilities were. Currently, right now, we have four employees that are getting paid the same amount, and it's not fair to the older employees that are there that are doing a lot more work than the newer employees, so that's why there's a difference in the 2% to 6%. The other question about the consulting, it's a professional service fee, and it's not just one consultant, we have a number of consultants, and currently, right now, utilities are paying for all the consulting fees for the clerk treasurer's office, because we budgeted only $5,000 for this year, and I'm just trying to make it a little more realistically feasible for the city. It should be a lot more than that, but again, utilities will continue to pay for some consulting fees. fees.
I should add, just for the, oh, I'm sorry, just for the sake of clarity, those expenditures are approved by, you know, separate boards, but just as some budget considerations here anticipating things being paid for by RDC, for example, what Liz is describing is basically the same anticipation. I just say that for some clarity, transparency, and you didn't say anything wrong, Liz, I just wanted to explain that you're not gonna see like a note on that, you know?
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And the other, I would just wanna make it clearly known that six, six of my nine employees in my office are completely paid 100% by utilities, so those raises are gonna be a minute part of the, the city budget. It's gonna affect the utilities budget more than it does my, the city budget. They're paid 100%. Their medical benefit, everything, all their benefits are paid through utilities. Is there any more questions for me?
Um, Mayor, is the current budget also taking into consideration the late submission from the, I believe it's the Harbor Master for the Marina for a raise, for her as well?
That was not put into this still. When it comes to things like raises for multiple department heads and whatnot, just like I'm not getting a raise, that's gonna be something where once negotiations are finished up this year, because I'm gonna have to come to you guys ideally sometime between now and January with the proposed contracts, you know, with the union, and that of course is gonna reflect how money is spent in the city as well, just like it always does.
Okay, so I was just questioning, since she sent us an email after our Budget Committee meeting, asking for that increase on the budget, so it never got addressed in the email, so I just wanna make sure so that if she wonders what happened to it-
Simply put, at this point, I've had discussions with all department heads and it's not that nobody's, you know, the only person who's definitely not getting a raise in the future is myself, I'm doing fine, but all said and done-
And us.
And you guys.
And also, also the Clerk Treasurer's not getting raised.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, that's true too. All said and done, we have to start from the standpoint of making sure that the city's functioning, that's step one, and that's this budget. Step two is reflecting the-
No, I get that, I just wanna make sure that her email, since it came after our Budget Committee, that she's aware, even though you may have met with her prior to her email, that she's aware that that's not gonna be reflective on this budget.
Department heads are aware, yeah, that we've not budgeted for things like that.
Okay.
So overall, what, what is the, is there an across-the-board for non-union employees since three unions are in negotiation, across-the-board percentage?
I've not put that in, the Clerk Treasurer's Office has put in, and I'm not, I only, well, no, I'm sorry, not a set amount, but you've got your proposed raises, you know, for your people. I did put in a raise for the two staff, people within my office, so that would be Leanne and that would be Norma.
Okay, so that didn't answer my question.
Thought it did, my bad.
Is there an across-the-board raise for all the non-union employees in the city? That's all the clerks at City Hall, that's Building Department, or Community Development, Police, Fire, Streets? Or is this, is that on hold?
You can say it if you want.
There are some raises in there for, I believe we went through the City Hall, Planning Department, the Building Department, the other ones are contingent on contract negotiations, so we didn't wanna-
But I think, Colin, in my understanding, you're talking about the non-union employees. If any non-union employees are getting raises across the board of any fixed amount, is that correct?
Correct. That's what I'm asking.
That's not within there right now because we're waiting to see how those contracts come, where the money goes, and then we can do across the board in those same spots.
And that will be an additional appropriation next year.
Hold on, so we are, we are making non-union employees wait for bargaining units to negotiate their contracts, but then some people are getting raises now and guaranteeing some raises, but not an across-the-board, as if a clerk in the Building Department is different than a clerk at the Fire Department? I'm confused.
It was discussed with the departments that don't have the union representation, you know, within them, where they wanna be, and so we reflected those changes in the budget. But yes, with the departments where we have union representation, we were waiting to get that worked out and then bring the cross-the-board raises in there.
So are you guaranteeing that those departments that have non-union employees are gonna get the same, let's use Streets for example, they're in negotiations now, are those clerks of the Street Department gonna be equal in raises to what their union employees negotiate? Because that's not what we've necessarily done in the past, but-
I can't guarantee that, no, but we do have to budget and figure out how much money there's gonna be to give across the board, and that's part of the negotiation process is communicating, just like you come to an-
So what if it's zero? That's, that, I guess that's my concern here. We are deciding that some departments that have non-union employees are getting raises now without having factored in the cost of union negotiations, but then there's a subset of other non-union employees who get left hanging out there that get nothing and could potentially get nothing if unions negotiate their contracts and all the money's gone.
So I guess to start with that, you have to consider that nobody's getting a raise inherently just because it's budgeted for one, you guys still need to vote on the salary ordinance for the change in there, but then the second part to that, I mean-
Yes, that's a mechanism, but-
And then the next, the next, but the next part of it-
By adopting the budget, knowing what the percentage is, that, that's in essence determining what an across-the-board cost of living adjustment would be for employees.
I mean, I understand the concept because if you vote for it, it'd be odd to vote for it thinking that you're gonna vote no, but you certainly can. That said, part of the negotiation process is explaining that there's things that we want to do and that includes being able to have enough money to cover the cost of health insurance now in the future. It includes having money to cover the cost of giving raises to the non-union employees who support them in their offices. The challenge there is that when it comes to the negotiations, we were waiting, well, and I gotta be careful what I say because we're in negotiations right now, a big part of what we were waiting on is how much the health insurance cost was going to go up, and now that we got that, it allows us to start budgeting some different options and bring it to them as far as what we're offering, as far as wage increases.
Okay, so that leads-
But we had to have a budget prepared first, which gets challenging.
Right, so that leads me to the next question, for police, for the police budget, fire to budget, MVH, parks, did we proactively budget a raise or did we assume 0%? Well, Fire, we should have budgeted because they're in a contract.
Fire's budgeted because it reflects the contract, police-
Are we sure about that? Because the 2024 adopted budget was, according to this copy, 4.67 million, and the adopted budget for 2025 in front of us is 4.696 million.
Chief Creo, do I come up?
That does not seem to compute.
He's pulling it up.
Because remember correctly, it's 3%, is that right, Chris?
3.8%.
Yeah, that doesn't look, that, that it's not 3.8%. That should be closer to 5 million.
So what was proposed to us for our wages was 4.69 million and last year it was 4.67 million.
Yeah, that's not gonna cover 3.8%. So is that, here's my question, and Chris, you weren't here, but did they budget based off the number of people currently working or how many positions were budgeted for but aren't filled?
It's a good question, so I was told that it was budgeted off the number of people that were actually working, not the people that we were allowed to have. That was, that was what I was told.
That was the case in this year's budget with the police as well, and that was an issue we ran into. When, even when we were setting up the budget for, looking at this year to look at next year, it was confusing because like with the police, the clothing allowance represented a certain number of police, but the wages budgeted, represented a different number, and then it turned out, it looked almost as if that last year when the budget was passed, they reduced the amount for the employees-
Yes, which is what appears happened with Fire too.
But forgot to do so with the clothing allowance, which gave the clue.
So we are already, just knowing that this 3.8% is in there, we are already in one line item, gonna be short 177,000 minimum, because there are people working who are going contractually to get a raise on January 1st that is not budgeted for. The, the increase is $20,000, but it's supposed to be 177.
And just to kind of echo what I had said earlier about wages with the Clerk's Office between, and I understand the responsibility and the long, and the long time that they've been here, just for 2025, Social Security is anticipating a 2.5% cost of living increase, so trying to stay at a 2% wage increase for those clerks across the board was a little bit behind my reasoning as well, just to give them a little bit of what they would require to get them into the same salary range as their other counterparts in other municipalities, but also looking at what the cost of living for next year is going to be.
Right, and I, I don't disagree with you on that, Victoria, I, I think that was, what you're saying is correct, but I'm already throwing out here is like, we failed to budget for a raise that we guarantee, we can guarantee is gonna happen because it is contractual for next year. I understand-
Well, and to start, that also happened this year, so last year's past budget that took effect into this year also didn't do that with the firefighters.
Well, no, it budgeted for the raises, what the Clerk Treasurer's Office last year failed to do was they budgeted, they changed the budget to get it to equal out to the number of people working, but what I'm saying now is we are seeing this, I'm seeing this in here right now, and it is going to create a $177,000 budget hole automatically, because we know it's gonna happen.
Like Liz is doing the math, because as noted, the-
I, I am doing the math, and it looked like what was proposed last, uh, last year, or published last year was 4, 4,520,000 and, and what was adopted was 4,667,126 dollars.
Right, so we, we-
So I don't know what the-
We increased it by another 120,000 dollars from what was adopted in 2024, but now we have only increased it by, what, what is that? $20,000 to cover a 3.8% raise in a department that's, it's gonna cost 200,000 dollars. So either that was a numerical error, that was supposed to be 4.96 million, or we are going to be short. Like that, that, just comparing 24's budget to 25's budget, we did not budget a 3.8% raise. It is guaranteed that that's gonna happen with the Fire Department. I understand police and Streets and Utilities and Parks are in negotiations, so we, I mean, in my opinion, we should be budgeting something, there's not gonna be a 0% contract, that's just not gonna happen.
Are you not, are you-
It's never happened.
Are you going by the 4, 4,660, or 6, 4,667,126 dollars doing a straight across a 3.8% increase on that?
Yes.
Chief, I, I don't think that's-
Our figures are based on the employees, and I do not have those figures with me tonight, but they're based on the employees that are currently there plus-
Right.
The ones, and you said you were at full maximum, I believe, or you were at the full capacity right now?
You're what, five short?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have everybody on staff right now, so that's the problem that we ran into in 2024.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if we, if, like, I, excuse, I'm sorry, but Carrie Belt is not here to answer questions, she had a, she's got a family emergency, and I don't know how she truthfully figured out the raises other than she said that they were accurate with the staffing that was approved and also the increases for the contract.
Liz, is it possible, is it possible to take a-
So we will look, we, I will look into it, but we can't change this right now.
Is it possible to take a brief recess? Do you wanna try to give Carrie a call? Because I mean, this is a very important matter and I apologize because-
Yes, I will.
Well, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it, we can't increase this budget.
You cannot.
This budget has to be adopted tonight.
He's absolutely correct.
Or we are gonna revert back to 2024's budget, so that, that option is, is gone. What I'm saying is, we are, I mean, the Budget Committee is gonna have to find money in this budget to fund contractually obligated raises, and that's just probably one example. And, and if we think that police and Streets and Utilities are gonna be 0%, they, there's never been a contract that's had a 0% raise. I mean, there's been 1% in which they took massive pension boosts that we had to pay for too, as, in lieu of raises, so-
It's been stated, I don't think that anyone's anticipating a 0%, but a big part of what we had to figure out, given the current financial situation, is we had to first know and we, well, we know now, and now we're running numbers and bringing it to the negotiations, we had to know how much the healthcare was going to increase, because if healthcare increased by 10%, we didn't have any, well, if all we're doing is paying healthcare, I mean, all we're doing is paying healthcare, but a healthcare increase of 10% means massive cuts across the board, and we wouldn't have been able to prepare a budget based on a 10% increase. And so when it came in that we became aware that it was gonna be a 2.6% increase, we've started running numbers based on that 2.6% increase, which again, in this budget, is reflected in an anticipated 4% increase. Now, if you wanna say, Mayor, why didn't you just run it down to 2.6? Well, it's because we don't have the official thing in that says it's 2.6 and it just didn't seem very responsible. Bringing it down to four, cover where it was. That said, we now have to run numbers based on the 2.6, make sure it actually comes in as a 2.6 increase, and then we go to the negotiation table. Again, I gotta be careful what I say here, but what I will say here is, when it comes to raises, that's gonna have to be looked at compared to the cost of providing the health insurance, because Boardage pays a lot of money for health insurance, even offering a raise, and again, based on our negotiations and conversations with the union, they're aware of this, that's why I appreciate how hard they worked to get the 2.6 numbers in as soon as they could. They're aware that raises are great and at the same time, we also have to be able to afford their benefits, so that's what's being worked on right now. The challenge, and it's been complicated by this Fire issue, but the challenge is we have to propose a budget to the state and the state is not like, they're not basing it on whether or not we get our union contract on, but that's been the case every year that there's a union contract. This matter with the Fire, I truly apologize because simply put, I know that Fire-
Well, I don't, I don't think it's anybody's fault and I don't think that there's anything necessarily done wrong here, but I, the issue we're gonna run into is if we are basing, the 3.8 might be included, I, I'm not denying that.
That's the part we need to check and make sure.
It probably is, I'm looking at the appropriation report through 1015, it, it probably was included. The problem is, the budget number is based off the number of current employees and not the number of employees that was budgeted in 2024 that Chris has been actively sourcing candidates for. So what you're gonna run into in 2025 is either telling the Fire Department and probably police, you can't hire anybody else because we didn't budget for the additional positions.
That's what we had to do with police this year when we found out that the number of police, well, I shouldn't say that, Chief, I don't wanna speak, but it was a pretty big deal when we found out that the department didn't actually have the budget to reflect the number you guys were told you could hire.
It's a major problem.
Yeah, it was the number at the Budget Committee meeting that all of us were at and we all agreed to, and the number that was entered was not the number that was agreed to. And it created the same problem that Fire is now gonna have in 2025. Fire is gonna have this exact same problem, we might have solved it for police, I don't know, because who knows what the raise ends up being, but Fire, I mean, they're, already I can tell you the 3.8% is gonna eat up this budget just for the current people that are working, and that is assuming that nobody retires that can be replaced.
Chief, you got something to say?
Do you wanna, you wanna take a break and maybe I can get ahold of Carrie and find out or-
I think it would be good for the purposes of just the, I don't wanna just say trans-
Clarification.
Clarification, I think we could take a 10-minute recess, come back, see if you're able to reach Carrie and see if we can get clarity on that. Colin, I agree with you, like, we'll have to solve the problem if it is a problem.
Well, I would, I would say, we, let's not take a re, I mean, I think, Liz, if you can contact Carrie, I have other questions, but-
Sure, if that's okay with you, Liz.
I mean, we can take a recess, that's, that's fine.
I, I'd prefer it just for the sake of continuity, let's take a 10-minute recess, do we need to vote on that or can I gavel that? I'm gonna put us in a 10-minute recess, here we go. I'm gonna put us in a 10-minute recess, here we go.[534.16]
Out of recess, I hope I'm timed enough with Zee that when I hit this gavel, we should be back. Oh, and we're on. For those who are just tuning in, I just pounded the gavel. I don't know if that made the video or not. Good, it did. I don't care what anyone says. This is the most fun council we got. I love you all. So.
I got clarification?
If you could start on the fire and then I'll speak to a little bit more about the other wages, but if you could speak to fire from what you got from talking to Carrie, and I appreciate Carrie being available.
Thank you, Carrie, if you're watching, but I think, I don't think she's even watching right now. She said that she did budget for every person plus the five missing and put them all at the amount they should start at. Oh, I'm sorry, the five, the five new employees are gonna, are budgeted for the amount they would be starting at, plus the 3.8% rate across the board raise for everybody at the fire department. And the reason for the discrepancy or the, why they're so close in the, for the budget this year is because you do have three higher paid employees that are going to be retiring this year. And like I said, the five new employees will be coming in at the lower rate. And that's just, as she said, that's why there's a discrepancy in it. And she did include for the new employees at the highest rate for the healthcare benefits. And so there's a little wiggle room there in case there, we're off by a little bit, so.
And I wanted to add in on a bit more. I've reached out and checked with Lynn Graylik and HR. I'm always careful with how I talk about things, so I wanted to make sure that was good to say this. When it comes to the non-union, especially on the clerical side across the board, I wanted to check in just to make sure that there was nothing I could say that would come off. Well, I don't even know how to put it. Sometimes you're just careful and keep, you know. We are interested in pursuing a wage study when it comes to these. One of the challenges we've ran into, and it's been a cool challenge to meet now that we've got HR, is that Portage has not had strong or in many cases ridden job descriptions for a lot of positions. One of the challenges with doing across the board lateral is that it's best handled when you have defined, you know, what's the word? Well, like I just said, job descriptions for each position. We've been working on that with different departments over this year, but that part's not quite finished up. And so that's also part of what caused, if not a delay, kind of a gentleness when it comes to how we're planning for an increase in salaries. I understand the points raised about when you need to budget it, you know, when you'd, I shouldn't say when you don't, but like how you approach it. But just to state that we are in the process of creating and making sure that every position has a job description, so then we can then apply it to a wage study, which is the route that we want to get to. I'm not claiming that's necessarily a satisfactory answer or as satisfactory as everybody would want, but just to explain that there was a little bit more to it. But that the other piece is that, quite frankly, we were waiting on healthcare and we're waiting on figuring out what we need to budget for everybody.
And I do want to clarify that I have been working with Lynn in my department as far as the job description. She was very helpful in getting, getting the job descriptions done basically almost across the board for the State Board of Accounts also.
And I think that that's something to state when we're talking about even Liz's confidence in her department, you know, compared to say others is the amount of time it's taking to get those done. You know, like I say, we started with you, then we went over, you know, to the park. We're in the process of getting that done with building, but all said and done, to do a full wage study, you do need those strong job descriptions, but we're by no means avoiding that topic.
Okay, so that gets to another question. Liz, what, what are we expecting our ending general fund balance to be at the end of 25 with this budget? Is this budgeted to zero or is this budgeted with a cushion?
Originally.
I mean, obviously it's going to be budgeted to zero because that's how we budget. But like, where is that cushion in like professional services, random line items? What does that number work out to be?
We're going to be negative for this year.
Do you mean 24 or 25?
24.
I, I was asking about 25.
Oh, 25. We will be right at zero. It's a very tight. I mean, we might have a little cushion. It depends on what, if there's any additional revenue next year, which we are anticipating hopefully to get some additional revenue.
If you don't mind me elaborating on that a little, and feel free to do the forehead thing. I mean, I get it. That was me all this budget process, I promise you. Within this budget originally, what I proposed to you guys, so when it was initially, what the budget committee looked at, what was that last week? Or two weeks ago? When we had, sorry, I was like sick as a dog. I wasn't actually physically here. If you remember, I was on the phone because, you know, I appreciate you guys putting up with my nasally voice. But the budget as originally proposed in the draft, it was a funded but not balanced budget. So what that meant is that it was, in terms of revenue versus expenditure, it would have left a $25,000 hole. But the anticipation from myself, Liz, and our consultants was that the, would be enough money to be able to cover that, you know, extra $25,000. That said, there are certain things that I, we're not allowed to legally speaking, put into the state, by the way, I think the council might do this or things might do that. But there are measures that we're going to be taking by the end of this year that I believe are going to increase revenue. The first one is we're receiving payment from the school system for the SROs. So there'd been an agreement for the previous four years for the school system to help pay for the expense of our SROs. However, it was never billed, and so the city never received revenue for that for the previous four years. We've got a check that got written this week. It'll be the first installment of the new agreement, and so that'll be able to cover some expenses for the SROs. We're working with the park board on increasing fees. It's actually kind of amazing when you think about how this year Nativity Fest and Market on the Square both happened on a Friday. And the price difference is kind of amazing when you realize how like things like the price of a beer at our parks, that's something that I believe will need to go up. Now watch, there's people watching this thing. There goes Austin Bonta again raising fees and doing all this, but all said and done, I know that the planning department is going to be coming to you guys next month with a proposal to increase engineering fees for companies that are coming in. Those are all things that we can run numbers on. However, I can't legally make a budget based on what might happen by the end of this year. So I say that with some confidence that other revenue is going to be coming in based on those adjustments. Again, the only one I can say for certain, well, would be the thing with the school. You know, then you've got the fact that like we're actively working on continuing to reduce our IT contract, not in terms of the contract itself, but how much we pay. Trevor and I had a great meeting today with Proven about consolidating the three printing contracts, which could save us $25,000 over three years. Again, little things that add up. It's just to say that you can't put stuff like that down on here.
Right. I, I appreciate that. I guess my question is more so, in the past, we were, we were getting better with tax anticipation warrants. I think we were down to like 3 million?
Not this year.
Not this year, I know.
It was down to, I think, 2.8?
We had gotten it down pretty far. We, we were, we were getting on a, a good path with not having to do as much in tax anticipation warrants.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
The reason for that was because of the COVID ARPA money.
Yes, that helped. No denying that. So now we are going to be, our general fund is going to be negative at the end of the year. We were projecting, I think, a 2 million surplus coming into this year, initially from last year's budget.
There were things that were going to mess that up from the get-go. I mean, one example.
I understand that, if I could finish my point.
Sure thing.
So my question is now for 2025, are we projecting any form of surplus or is this budgeted to the dollar and we are just hoping beyond hope that revenue keeps up?
So to start, it's not bud, well, you could say it's budgeted to the dollar, but you got to keep in mind a couple of things. One, when it comes to wages, like what we get by the healthcare not going up, what it is, things like that. The other thing you got to consider is, man, I'm trying to say this the right way. Mistakes in the 2024 budget that hurt us in a bad way. One example is the 2024 budget anticipated $600,000 in revenue for the marina, which the marina was nowhere close to that. What it was is somebody, I don't know who, but somebody took the 300,000 we get from dock fees, and they doubled it as if people were going to pay for another half of the year. And so like that was a giant shock of like, wait, where's the revenue that we said was going to happen in 2024? Well, it turns out apparently nobody in Indianapolis checked and saw, you know, wait a second, this isn't how marinas work, you know, especially up here in the north. As you mentioned, the fire contract didn't reflect the actual budget. The, yeah. Oh, no, but what it means with the fire contract, yeah. All said and done, there were issues with the 24 budget that I'm trying to be gentle about because people tried their best.
You are correct. There were issues with the 24 budget. Nobody's denying that.
So this budget was originally budgeted to zero based on the fact that it was budgeted with a 6% healthcare increase. With healthcare being down, that saved some, but at the same time, we know that we're going to have to have increases in wages for people. We got to plan for that. And that's why for me to say I'm relatively confident that it's budgeted to zero with some buffer, but you know how these things are. Expenses come, it snows a lot.
Yep.
What I can say is that I'm confident that we're going to make some other adjustments before the end of this year that increase revenue as well.
Thank you. Last one. Did the budget committee, I'm just curious, consider the looming threat of property tax reform? And how that's going to impact us as a, as a city. It's going to impact every city. I, I mean, it's, it's not going to affect us in 25, but if it happens, it will drastically affect our budget for '26.
We didn't discuss that at all, but we, we did talk about different avenues of just departments in general.
Yeah, I mean, the, the frank problem with this tax reform proposal, I mean, capping our growth at 2 and 3% is a disaster. I mean, it will, is going to devastate us in terms of our general fund revenue. And I mean, we have been budgeting, I want to say 5% property tax growth. Was that what it was this year?
4%.
Yeah, 4%, 5%. To cut that in half and return us basically to 2021 levels is going to devastate us. I mean, we, we literally will not be able to fund general operations. We, I, we will be talking drastic budget cuts. And I think I'm, I'm just putting that out there as a warning that come 2026, if, if this property tax reform proposal goes through in the next general session, we are going to have to have some serious discussions about budget cuts, about health insurance, because it is going to ruin our budget.
I think that, not to get, and not to get too political, but you're right. And I'll go down with you to, I mean, protest if need be, speak if they let me, but simply put, the city of Portage, I hope this council in particular, we've got to hopefully be a united front to advocate for what we and other city governments need to be able to function.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the problem with this tax reform proposal, it's not necessarily, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that property taxes have gone up significantly, but it's an assessed value issue. It is not, we have constitutional tax caps. We are already capped at 1, 2, and 3%. The, the issue is this plan to return to 2021 levels, which our budget would be 3.5 million dollars less or something, that we don't have 3.5 million dollars to make up. And then to cap the growth, not on assessed value, which is the actual problem, but the actual tax bill growth, we can't function off 2%, 3% a year. We, we, we just can't do it. Cost of services are going to keep going up. So I, I think, looking forward to '26 and whatever we do in '25, we have to be mindful of that going into '26, that we are going to have to figure out ways to either generate revenue or trim down expenses, because '26, if this happens, will be devastating. Absolutely devastating. We, if you think tax caps in 2011 was bad, just wait for this, because this is going to be even worse.
I can tell you that every department in some way, when they came with their budget, and just to go to the history a little bit with this budget. And what I'm about to say is by no means a criticism of everybody. Everyone's got their style. Every era has their style, and I hope I'm not telling too much Portage history. There was a time in Portage where the budget was written by Councilman Dave Highlands. He wrote the budget, and just to clarify, under state law, the state law just says that the mayor gives the budget to the city council. You guys all know this. I'm speaking to the audience, sorry, just for a minute. Dave Highlands would write the budget. He would hand it to the mayor. The mayor then handed it back to the council. The council voted. I'm certain that if Dave Highlands were still alive today, he'd be here in this seat, not me. I'd be a happy resident with Mayor Highlands. That might just be a personal opinion, but I don't think I'm that off. All said and done, through different iterations of that, there are some, you, you talk about like what we're dealing with here at this meeting, what you guys are doing such a great job doing. There are some cities where a mayor will purposely give the council a crazy out of whack budget, so that the council has the ability to shrink it, and then it gives the council flexibility to more or less move money around in a way that a mayor-proposed budget straight up can't unless it's purposely, you know, inflated. I didn't do that to you guys. If you guys are interested in that style, talk to me, but I don't see that as the best policy. But I understand why some cities do it, especially maybe some bigger cities. In the past in Portage, there's been a history of the budget committee putting the budget together, and again, nothing wrong with this, but budget committee then, if you will, legally speaking, hands to the mayor, mayor hands back to the council. When I came in, I had a different, let's call it executive style. I went to the department heads. They put together their proposed budget, not exactly a wish list, very real budgets that they thought were sensible. Then with the help of Liz, with the help of Leanne, who, you know, is just incredible. I don't know how I could do this without Leanne, and then speaking of people, I can't do this without Mr. Ed Graham. We went through and then we trimmed all of those. I don't think there was a single department head who got what they wanted. Someone might say, well, what about the police? Yeah, there was one thing that's not officially in the budget, and that's the cop cars. I came in rather determined to be the first mayor in some time to have cop cars budgeted. It just wasn't something that we were able to fit into the official general fund budget, but we are pursuing two other avenues. One through a bond, then one through the RDC to put together to begin our police car purchasing plan. There's firefighters probably watching this meeting or will be who are like, well, wait, what about our equipment? We're working on that too. Actually, Dan Bodich with a team of Chicago cops put together an excellent fire equipment purchasing plan, which to be fair was not accounting for any tax reform issue, but that said, our issue there is getting money together to kickstart that. I'm not trying to go on and on, but just to state, this has been a different process this year. You know, I appreciate it. It's a freshman year from my perspective, so I appreciate your guys' patience with me, but just to state, you know, where we're going with this, this is kind of a different style of a mayor proposing a budget in Portage and then you guys having the ability to shrink or assess it. You're doing a very good job there, so I guess all said and done, I just want to note, this is not a budget where anybody is spoiled, you know, per se. There were things that were built in that we needed to reflect, like the firefighters. That's why if you watch my facial expression, I can't imagine the meeting when Colin brought up the issue, I was like, wait, I could have sworn we fixed that. And all said and done, I appreciate the recess so we could get that figured out, you know? But simply put, this is definitely a lot more direct, so again, I appreciate your guys' feedback as we go.
And also to add to you, Mayor, just for Colin's knowledge as well, that the budget committee also invited all the department heads to come and sit and, and answer any questions that we may have.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's very similar to the process that was ran the last four years. I mean, Mike can speak to this. He was in those. I think, Mike, we probably last year met four or five times with police. Fire, we did the same, so, I mean, the, the process, I, I don't have any concerns, questions about that, yeah.
I just felt that that's good to clarify too, because however the budget turns out and how things go, I just want to make sure that people are aware. If you like what happens here, if you like how the budget turns out as a voter or a resident, to not blame the council for things that were on me. Or if you don't like it to not, you know, just to clarify how that process went this year.
I said, that was my last question. I actually have one more.
I'll forgive you.
And, and Liz, this is going to be a very technical, technical question. How, did we, were we able to not fix, but figure out a creative way to use NVH restricted this year? Because that's always been a issue with us, having to split NVH funds between unrestricted, restricted, per state law, 50/50. Did we figure out a creative way to use that for road paving this year for '25?
We are still looking into that, whether or not it's legal or not, so.
Yeah, another issue the state needs to fix.
Yes, absolutely.
Give us our NVH money and let us spend it how we want to spend it. This 50/50 split between restricted and unrestricted is so limiting to us. It, it, it makes absolutely no sense.
So. You're, you're always welcome to jump back in. Don't worry. Yeah. I think combing through, and I might be wrong, I think that questions have been answered. Are there new questions? Are there things that I'm missing? And again, I want to clarify too, I very much appreciate how the budget committee handled it. Ferdinand, I think my favorite thing in that meeting was when you said, so what are we supposed to do? I said, well, it's actually our city ordinance that requires the mayor gives it to the budget committee first, and as noted, by kind of rearranging the process in accordance with state law, but still different than how we used to do it. I appreciate your guys' patience with me and the department heads as we figured out this new layout. No, you, you were great. You were asking for like literally like what action could the budget committee take, yeah?
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 budget?
We have a motion.
I second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion further?
I just would like to thank both the mayor and the clerk taking the time answering the questions, reaching out to us with the questions that each of us had before this, so thank you.
I want to second that. Thank you.
And I just want to say to you guys, one last thing. I know that I don't control when I get sick, but please know that I would have done so much more if I hadn't gotten ill, what I did. I love you all, and I just want you to know, that was the worst part of that whole phase for me. So we do have a motion and a second. Liz, could you do this as a roll call? No, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, I don't, no, no, no. Melissa seconded Ferdinand. Don't worry, Scott. You were referring to a different aspect. No problem. Poor Kyle, you were like the most inaccurate like cited. How many times we had to fix the minutes because of? Okay, feels like we're. So we do have a motion from Ferdinand and a second from Melissa. Liz, could you call roll?
Councilmember Alvarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Weidenbach.
Yes.
Councilmember Geishurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Parnell.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Zilly.
No.
The budget passed.
All right. Yeah, believe it or not, we actually have more things on this agenda, so one got taken off. But then we have the appropriation of the opioid ordinance number 29. Colin, I don't want you to take this as a punishment for voting no, but do you mind reading that for us?
Sure. Additional appropriation ordinance number 24-29, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one being ordained by the common council of the city of Portage, Porter County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same from, or fund name 2257 opioid settlement restricted, department 000, major budget classification supplies $44,831.70. Services $36,540. Total opioid settlement restricted $81,371.70. Let the record reflect this has been read in its entirety. Motion to suspend.
We have a motion. We have a sec. A second to suspend the rules. All in favor? Actually, we should, if it's a suspension, do we need to do that as a roll call? It can still be an, okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
You want explanation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably should.
Appropriating the money we just recently got.
That's totally good.
This is actually appropriating the money so we can spend some of the opioid money for this year. Next year it's going to be all budgeted, so you guys know.
Could you state, Liz, what it is that's in there for this one?
It is for the fire department for some equipment that are, is mandated that they have for next year. It's trach, a trachea. Do you want to explain what?
There are no tracheal, two cameras that we use to innovate patients. I don't know, I don't have the entire list from here. Didn't know that I would be put on the spot, but I do know that. That's all right. They are for, those cameras. Do you have it? Yes, yeah.
I think I have it.
If you got it, that's good. Imagine how bad that'd be if Leanne had to run all the way up and then Liz had it.
It's for pulse oximeters. And then with, along with the carry case. Also for some videos to teach the firefighters how to use the pulse oximeter, uh, oximeter, oximeter. And then also for local subscriptions that they have to have in order to run the oximeters.
So I guess I can expound a little bit on that. So we have to, now, we have to pay for and track our own narcotics. That is part of what that is for. There is also a training mannequin for these new video laryngoscope blades that we have, the video laryngoscope blades, the pulse oximeter. I think that might have been it for the 44,000.
And then also we have a contract with Portage Recovery Association that we have to pay, so it's included in this transfer. Not transfer, additional appropriations.
And then I assume we're expecting more of these settlements, right, Liz? I, I, I keep getting the communications for some reason.
Well, that's good. Yeah, we, we are expecting more. They've been sporadic. They have a, they had a schedule back in 2022, 2023, and it's certainly not going by the schedule. So it's hard to budget for that amount when you don't know for sure how much you're getting in, so we just budgeted what we have in our accounts so far.
So the original settlement, 395. So the original settlement, 395,000, and then there's, you get money for like 10 years every year. That was like the big settlement with one of the, yeah, 14 years with one of the pharmaceutical companies. But now there are additional settlements the state's negotiating with Walgreens, CVS, Walmart, all the providers of opioids that we are getting money from. So there's a bunch of these settlements that the state's negotiated, and Portage was partied to the lawsuit from the 2000s, and we're finally starting to see the settlement money come through. But I mean, it's been a significant sum of money. I think it's approaching a million dollars total?
No, it's right around 500, 600,000.
I meant like what we're expecting to get over the next, yeah.
We're expecting to get more than like 1.3 million, but it, it keeps going up. Like you say, you get, I get notifications too of, of the draws that they're going to be sending us, so. They actually do ACH payments too, so.
Liz? I'm open, of course, if anybody has any other discussion, but I want to clarify, Liz, we do have a motion and a second already on the floor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't want to have one of those where we miss one, you know? Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we're good. And then ordinance number 30, I believe we agreed to take that one off the agenda for some further clarification.
Correct, correct.
Any other matters not already considered by the council? I guess I'll just add one other thing for correspondence, in case you didn't know. Next Friday on the 8th at 12:30, if available, you guys are going to get an official invite. I hope you can come, but we're going to be having the ribbon-cutting grand opening for the outdoor fitness court over at the corner of Lute and Airport. It's been fascinating having, it's one of those things where there's always just someone who doesn't quite know what's going on there, and it's kind of fun to tell it every time. But I think it's a great addition to our park system. We really appreciate the effort that came in. And maybe we can all try to like work out together on the bars and see which one of us lasts longest. I'll probably go down.
There could be a comedy show on me.
Can anybody confirm the Halloween trick-or-treat hours? Thank you.
5:30 to 7:30. And, oh, I'm sorry, and, and, oh, no, and I was just going to add a little more too. We technically voted on that at the Board of Works, but I will say, just to anybody, you don't need the government to tell you when to ask your neighbors for candy. Just, no.
7:30, my light goes off.
Yeah.
Sorry. Free candy ends at 7:30.
Any other comments from you guys? And if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.